Thank you, Jessica. Has anyone received any communications that they would like to share? Here we go. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So.
Second?
Second.
Julie, discussion. Here we go. Am I in favor?
Hi.
I may as well. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented passes. We're already at reports. Mr. Zhang.
Very good. So the first and only thing I have here is the October 1 report. This report is turned into the state twice a year, October and April, I believe. So that front page you see there is the actual report we send into the state. Behind that are the reports that we had from the principals. So as the principals in the air, to answer this question about the enrollment, please give without some nuance of never in yourself. I think we'll start with the oldest president of the moon. Mr. Kim.
You know, isn't there some title behind violation that John Kurt?
On video.
You give your priority.
Wisdom.
Wisdom, that's right. As long as you have going after the Buffalo Bills, I thought this is my year.
I apologize, you did not get a report from me with the pack, although Kristy was going to send something out.
It's in the drive time.
It's in the drive time. It's a fascinating report. I encourage you to read it at your leisure. Not really much on it, other than confirming that what Mr. Zhang has already given, we have exactly the same number of children that we have that we have in first grade school. The math things are going fantastically in Berlin.
Mr. Zhang, would you like to take a look at this?
Yeah, John, I'm going to do a similar pumpkin fest to what BES has coming up.
We do pumpkin decorating and then we do a Halloween parade.
Another fest.
A fest.
Is it backed up?
Well, maybe just backed up. We wanted a whole, we wanted both of those.
This is a similar kind of event to what BES has recently, is it? The BES pumpkin fest last year was pretty robust.
That was the first year.
It was. Oh, it was the first year.
Last year was the first year.
Mr. Zhang, did you want to share some pumpkin fest?
Okay.
Maybe we shouldn't add any. It's like gangs and stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Recreation does want to add one.
Yeah.
We do, yeah.
And that's the end of this again. I think BES takes on more of a central role in this because in Berlin we have a lot of bases.
John, before we go on to Sally's report, you have the same amount you did opening day as October. What could you talk to me about? Is that typical or do you see increases or decreases? What time of year is it? Is it all summer?
Usually sometime. We'll pick up a couple of kids over the course of the school year. There's a couple of kids over the course of the school year. And then summer's the time of the day. Change starts. People, actually people will sometimes find in Berlin that people will lie in the spring, but because their kids are already somewhere else, they leave their kids in school. And that'll happen in some time. My question is, Mrs. Gabrielle Sugarin, because she is not always here, it falls to me and I don't ever get the rights for it. She's the yellow.
All right, so for Tohonto, the numbers are pretty much the same too. I think we're just one off from the beginning here. We get student control, but like you said, our numbers usually see the increases and the drops mostly in the summer, so they typically see that right now. So that's why I haven't thrown them. I also have, I don't know if we're supposed to do this every day of the year. You can talk about it. So we have some requests to start some new clubs. And so the first one is the Ottawa. And that was requested by students in the Valley and it's to be run by, advised by Krista D. Young. It's a brand new club where they plan to talk about cars, what to do in the automotive world, how did you like doing yourself meetings and things. They're hoping to do some fundraisers. They're interested in taking a field trip at the end of the year. Another club is the chess club, which was suggested by fashion, many of them here, Eleanor Navara, with the advisor being Mr. Retirement. And this was influenced by some popularity with chess because of Netflix series. This is interesting because they can have not only these boards, but they can also play chess on computers. And they plan to meet, I believe, on Wednesdays after school. And then our third group, another one is the game group club, which has been actually running for quite a while voluntarily by Mr. Roberto Piccolino and Jeremiah Calon. It's been a very successful club. There's about 15 students actively participate on a regular basis. It's for both middle school and high school. Sometimes they, you know, they play games separately and sometimes they actually get together. And they play everything from home writing board games to card games. And it's a really nice group, especially for students who want to participate in after school activities, but aren't necessarily interested in sports or the other types of curricular activities that we have in Tohonton. In addition to those three clubs, we also have some requests for additional stipends for two of our extra curricular activities. One is for the Junior National Honor Society. That's currently being run by Francine Gleason and Chris Cassidy. They're proposing in addition to having the Junior National Honor Society advisor, that there also be a Junior National Honor Society coordinator. Because currently their responsibility is to take over 120,000 hours to complete the entire process of meeting and reviewing and choosing and forming the approximately 200 student applicants that apply each year. And then once they have their, you know, their members, they guide each of those members through two community service projects each student. They conduct several fundraisers and meetings and they also have their induction ceremony at the end of the year. And another additional stipend request is for the high school student council, which is run by Tenya Baker and Dr. Kim Trainer. And they would like to propose that there be a separate stipend advisor position so that they would have a high school student council advisor, but also a high school student council advisor slash student activity coordinator. They currently put in over 295 hours worth of time to perform many, many responsibilities associated with the student council, such as coordinating and running the sixth grade education happening for students in summer. Several first day school events to help welcome all the students to Tohonton on the first day. They run the fall, winter and spring spirit weeks and pep rallies. They do a lot of work with the home kind of kids. There's all sorts of activities throughout the year, such as the deck of halls competition, a high school school day fundraiser, 12 ways to staff appreciation. We have the haunted hallway ball festival that we have come here from 20 years ago. We have a very pumpkin competition this evening, a pumpkin. There's Thanksgiving food drive, clothing drives, many conferences that they take the students to throughout the year. Valentine's for veterans, pull and plunge for Special Olympics, penny award fundraisers. They do a walk for hunger type event at Mount Huxford. Plus there's all the elections and they also do send out to graduating seniors and collaborate with us for refresh day events and assistance with graduations.
So do you know how much the stipends are?
I actually, I didn't bring that when we were talking, but I'd be able to give you some.
Thank you.
Do you want to plug the enrollment? Okay. Other clubs first here. Also same thing to what Lori said. My second thing is, I mean, I know I've been in Junior National Honor Society induction and I can imagine that alone is a ton of work, just according to that alone. So it makes sense to me for there to be an additional stipend. I'm curious about the 200 student applicants there. If this is Junior National Honor Society, right? That's for what raises, isn't it?
So it's something.
Something.
I guess it would depend on the year.
Sure. Yeah, okay.
So like right now, I'm like those right now, I wouldn't do that.
Yeah.
And even I don't have the actual type of lease, I can give you an estimate that. Many of our advisors, what, I don't want to make sure, so many advisors.
You have the numbers.
Oh, you do, yes.
Junior National Honor Society is $682 and that's split by two. And then the high school student council is $1690. Split by two.
And then for clubs in general, like the other three clubs, they're usually around $698, that's what you're right?
That's the, yeah, that's the first dollar.
So what was the additional stipend? I mean, I think it's great that they deserve it.
Did they ask us to double it?
Right.
Yep. So they would, so the honor society would be another $600 and something dollars? And the student council is?
$1690, sixteen hundred.
So another 1700. Okay, makes sense. They were splitting it. There was always two people doing the work. They were splitting the stipend.
Yeah, we should split it for fun.
Makes sense.
I was the former National Honor Society president, student council treasurer, I spoke all the days. They were both, I mean, when I was a student in high school, I still think back to the experiences I had in those two organizations specifically. So strongly support the additional advisor for those organizations, still have some of the advisors who advised me 20 years ago, 20 years ago. So that's great. I had a question on the 2000 members themselves. It's a little difficult, or maybe not as clearly, to understand class size and the impact of class size at the junior and high school level as it is at the elementary school level. Pretty cut and dry. You got extender kids in the second grade class, who know what's big and what's not. As we look at the enrollment at Tohonton, are there any particular areas, subject matter areas where you're crowded, so to speak, and others where you're not?
I would say not so much in middle school because we basically hand schedule every day in the summer. We make sure that we look at balancing numbers, how we do that. So not necessarily, I mean, math is a little different because there are some different levels of math. You know, so there might be a class, like if there's one advanced algebra class, that might be a little heavier. That's how many kids got, you know, recommended for that. But for the most part, we even, you know, keep those classes pretty easy.
On the high end, what class or classes tend to have the most number of students in what classes? How many of them?
For the, for high school or middle school or?
Both.
So for middle school, if they're going to be high, let's say math classes based on the fact that, you know, certain math classes, like an advanced math class or something, because there might just be one. Let's say 26 kids get recommended for it. So that might be 26 kids in a class versus 20 and 21 and 22. The other classes, those other core classes, we try to keep those very even, you know. In the high school, I mean, you know, like certain classes, like every student needs to have English all four years. So of course, you know, there's, you know, probably higher numbers in those two classes.
What's the typical classroom size where they could perfect an English class?
I would have to say around, I would say around 20, 21.
Okay. So we're similar to what we are at the high end in the elementary school level, which probably a different type of grade than it is.
Yeah. And then, you know, some classes, like electric classes can be smaller. It really depends on the class.
Thank you.
They're kind of all over the place when you get into those.
Okay.
I have one more question. Okay, so my question is, this might be for Carol, who jumped too. So I know that, so I compiled enrollment numbers from 2016 until today. Color code is great. Those colors are great and we should. I think it's accurate. Anyways, so what the trend I was noticing was, and it's no big shock to anybody here, but their eighth to ninth enrollment numbers dropped significantly. Year over year though, we're losing between 50 and 20 kids consistently, more on the upward towards 20. Last year we lost 20 kids. So I'm just wondering if there's anything we can be doing as a district to help sort of understand why some of these kids leave, other than we, you know. I mean, Mike's son's in eighth, he's in eighth tonight, because most of his friends had left. And I get they go to St. John's Forest, they're going to Barnet, they're just asking to. But I'm wondering if there was something we could do, maybe exit interviews with these families to better understand, you know, what can we help, what can we do to help hold our students here?
I also think Julie, just because we talked about this too.
Yes.
So my idea is that we have lots of, is that, you know, we have this sixth grade parent camp, but like, why not have more informative, like, session to go from eighth to ninth? So that's like, understand the path and the rate that we do offer, you know, because I think sometimes when, you know, when we move students to private schools, it's a little bit hard to do that, you know. So I think that's something we can work on.
Yeah. I think that's great. That's a great solution. If, could we do exit interviews? With families?
Yeah, sure.
I know it's one thing, but then we could maybe hear from these families where, you know, where we're missing the work, if we're missing the work, if there's something we can improve. Thank you. Sally, I love the idea of doing the parent camp eighth to ninth, because I've said to so many people, you know, middle school is kind of like the snowman land. You have the fun of elementary school and the seriousness of high school and then, you know, these kids are just kind of morphing. They're just, and everything's awkward. And so, you know, it's hard to have a good middle school experience because it's just hard to be a middle schooler. But the middle school classes are so different than the high school classes. And the rigor and the opportunities that are at the high school, I think that's really, I love that idea of doing a parent camp eighth to ninth, so that they can see what's offered here. Right. And the kids can too, and they get excited about it.
And I think just because we're in the same school, there's, it doesn't, that's okay, that's, you know. So actually, I've already been talking to some staff, whether it be about who adds up, we're starting to develop some reviews.
That's great. I appreciate that. And I know the parents will really appreciate it too.
And I think like, you know, it's an early thought right now, but you know, eventually you do it even earlier than that. So people can make their choices before they start that whole process of what do you need, how do you need to do that.
That's fine. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else have a question?
I have a question for John. John, I saw that here's a community housing forum tonight in Berlin. And thought it was something you should probably keep in mind when it comes to the enrollment PNS. Mr. Tom, the chair, there was a Facebook post that he shared with me when he saw it, but, I'm sorry, yeah, tonight, Tuesday, 6:30. So it probably be worth us looking for some answers from that and seeing what's being discussed in terms of your enrollment objections to this thing being talked about in terms of enrollment housing. Would we know that, of course, it seems to be in our ability to take more students into those classrooms there?
And Mike actually, knowing that he wasn't going to be able to make it, actually wrote a long piece about what's going on in the schools and talked about the tour that we had. And then he actually videoed himself reading it and he sent it to them in two formats and said, if you could choose tonight, you pick which medium. Which I thought was really helpful, just so the school kind of weighs in on it. So it's going to give us a different type of view.
Planning board.
It was a planning board.
In some areas, CM, RTC.
Oh, central gas. CM, RTC. Regional planning.
I was going to say, I was going to say master plan.
You, you connected fire.
Ability study with them years ago. And that was from Miller.
Yep.
He's on it.
Yeah. Carol said that.
I remember that, so that's good to know.
All right, John, we're here. First principals report. Welcome. Thank you. So we are just down one student since our September reports. So we're at 308. We do have two students coming the week after next. A first kindergarten and a fifth grader. So we'll bump up a little bit there in terms of the trend of, you know, we obviously see a lot of building happening in town and the numbers have been increasing over time. And so I personally would like to keep an eye on that in terms of class sizes and distribution of classrooms per grade level. But we're cruising along. It's exciting over there and we're happy to be at home together. We still have some, we have some new staff we hired in the past month. And we just have a couple more slots to fill.
Is it feeling like home?
Yes, yes. Everybody is so welcoming and the community's been fantastic. And even though I was the lady with this crazy idea of, you know, drop off and become it and whatever, everybody sort of put up with me for a minute. And yeah, things are going really well and I think students are feeling engaged and happy to be back into the routine. We have some structure that we didn't necessarily have before and, you know, structure with a little bit of love. So that's it.
It's important to agree with you.
Yep. So, whatever questions?
Yeah, so I see you have a full festival on the 29th, which is great. On your festival.
Yes, yes. We don't mess around. We have a full festival.
Which is exciting. My son missed Pico Chute pumpkin last year.
Very exciting.
Really impressive pumpkins. They've got to make us, I'm looking forward to that. The enrollment trend at BES is a concern and I don't think it's going to stop anytime soon. And we talked about this, Megan and Julie and I in our budget supplement meeting last week. In particular, as it applies to the district improvement plan and the addition of additional staffing in Grand Ole. I'm not sure whether Carol will be able to, we'll be able to reconnect with you on it. But one of the points I made was looking at these classes per grade numbers, you know, we're at a point where we need to just commit to having maybe two teachers in every grade level. And there will be times when that leads to smaller class sizes and times when that leads to larger class sizes. But I'm interested in exploring and hearing as we go through the district improvement plan from all of you, thoughts on additional support staff across the building, based upon the size of the classes and what makes sense, what we need to announce, based on where the larger classes are. I think kindergarten is one that we certainly, in this group, talked about several times in meeting. I mean, I talked to a friend of mine, a teacher in the Southwood district, a kindergarten teacher, said their school community actually requires no more than a 10 to 1 ratio in kindergarten classroom. So there's no 16 person classroom with no teacher. Those are required to have a second at that point. And so that's intriguing to me as we think about moving forward and policies when it comes to things like class size that have just come into the past, how we can start in the district. Keeping those class sizes below 20 was an important thing here in the community and that continues to be the case. And so I think this is, as I think about the district and the issues that they sit over the next coming years, this to me is top of the.
And what you, what you get when you have classroom sizes, they small, but also you have consistency across grade levels in terms of three classrooms, is you get the consistency of educators coming together, learning a curriculum and being able to push forward and get through the challenges that it brings and then work together as a team. So when you move people around, back and forth, what you lose is that stamina in that grade level and their ability to deliver more intense, more rigorous instruction. Because they have to step back, relearn a curriculum and then push forward again. So even those teachers who I know have gone from second to third grade and sort of squawked back and forth, now they, they're learning a whole new literacy curriculum. And now that's going to be impactful if we move them again. And so I do think that it's really important for classroom teachers to have stability as well as kids.
You know, the other thing you have to realize is that 22 kids in kindergarten class, 22 kids in an 11th grade class, those are just very.
They're great, yeah.
And so, yeah, so the need for teachers is definitely there.
I agree with you, John Murray. I think the moving, I taught three different grades and it was like after a while, you're not, you're learning along with them. It's your program, you know, new things that you haven't learned in a long time. So I think the continuity would be good.
My mom took second grade for 30 years and you couldn't have been four in second grade last year, you were first in third. Look forward to next year.
No questions?
Yeah. I will let the three of you go home to your families. Enjoy the night. Thank you for coming and thank you for presenting. Anything else?
That sounded good, it's good.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. All right, we move on to item B, okay, item six, and we're going to be, Ms. Pastella.
Thank you. So in the past couple of years, we've made sure that the school committee has had a chance to see the grants that we're receiving and to approve those grants as well as what we are supposed to be doing. So we recently, this is the ESU grants, the Student Succeeds Act there. And these are the title grants, you know, like one, two, A and four. We get these annually. I wanted to make sure that we have those approved tonight. And also just to let you know, I mean, to see the amount that we're getting, these are not big figures compared to some districts we get millions of dollars, or at least hundreds of thousands of dollars. We try to stretch this money as much as possible. I put down a purpose in use, basically what we're using that funding for. But it's not a lot of money. We try to think about what we need from here ahead and adjust accordingly. So those are the figures for those three grants. Also, I just wanted to give you an update on parent teacher conferences. So by the end of this week, we should have all the elementary students scheduled for the, the parents scheduled for the elementary conferences. On October 17th will open up a link to Tohonton parents for a new system platform we're trying this year called Sign Me Up. And it is a link that the secretary of Tohonton will send out to parents and they will be able to select the teachers that they want to see. We have teamed up the middle school teachers, but only in pairs. So you will have MDLA, social studies and math science. That will give us more slots opening up, but it will also have common teachers together. And it will also keep that team really that the middle school teachers wanted to make sure they preserved. So we're trying it. I would, I would hope that parents bear with us this first year that we're doing this. We're hoping that it's effective. We'll certainly send out a survey after the conferences to see how this function and people were able to see, parents were able to get to the teachers and who they were to get to. Keep in mind, there's always the option to schedule a conference with the teachers individually apart from this particular night. I did want to point out too, it is the same evening, same day and same evening, around the 10th. It's an early release day and we thought to do this because it would keep preventing us from getting more half days off soon. So we're going to see if it works and if not, we may have to revisit that for next year. But I'm optimistic that this will work well. The times again, I had an error on the first one. They're actually 12:30 to 6:30 for the elementary schools, but there's a half hour break that's at the teacher's discretion, that they can pay for in the all break. But Tohonton has 5:30 to 8 o'clock, I'm sorry, 12 to 3 for their times. So those are conferences. That information will come again to Tohonton parents, October 17th to the 24th. And then finally, MCAS, we'll be doing the presentations following MCAS results. There were some gifts. I'm concerned about, we want to talk with the school committee about Walter Snee. And I just spoke to John before the meeting, he's met with Peter Dory, they were looking at data, I met with Peter, so the high school level. And we're, I think we all want to just share our perspective on what we're seeing and really to be honest about, you know, what we need, what we're seeing and what we need to do next. I also think that what I've heard from these folks is they would love to be able to educate the school committee on changes in MCAS and to really understand it better. Because I think in past years, we've had a PowerPoint presentation, principals go through it and then it's over and it's short, but there's really not an in-depth understanding, I think, of the MCAS and what they mean and how to read them and what it means for our district. So we would like to be able to offer that up before we do the presentations. So I'll have to figure out how to do that perhaps with the school committee. So that was the MCAS. Also, I added this last piece. I was reading this Friday, a note from Amanda Jovary, who teaches the banking class at Tohonton. And I thought this note just spoke to the fact that it had a lot of meaning to staff members, particularly this individual, Clint Savings Bank, who was a community partner as well. The parents came out that night who were very interested in this type of program that we're offering in Tohonton. And that I was talking to a parent who emailed, thinking about extending this kind of financial literacy program into the elementary school and middle school. And in some faction, we have had it in the past. It was very extensive in the elementary school. And it was through a parent who happened to be here at the time, who worked for a bank and brought it to terms. We tried it. It was a lot of time out in the classroom, worrying time. I think we can tell that we wanted to see if Savings Bank would pre-own to partner with us. Even at the elementary one, we gave a few sections on banking and jobs from there and other things in the middle school and then to the high school. So I am interested in doing that and I just was really excited that Amanda Jovary should reach out. So I'm interested to, and thank the parents for coming to open house.
I have one question, Carol. Open house was great, by the way. It was so great. It was so busy. I've never seen so many parents go to open house.
Good. The teachers kept the numbers. From what I looked at, and I haven't had a chance to talk directly to them, certainly much more in the middle school than the high school, really for the teachers, you know, they tend for these. But I thought the turnout was really strong for middle school. And the parents were buzzing and visiting and chatting with teachers and a lot of movement and a lot of excitement.
Yeah. Yeah. So my, so the question I have is, when the school plans big events like this, when you want the whole parent community to come, is there ever a conversation with the athletic department about geez, how does this night look for the athletes in the school? This will affect the parents. Meaning like, you know, field hockey team's away in here and soccer team's away in Ludenburg and...
Do you plan a different night where they're available, like those?
Where there's, yeah, there'll be home games or there's maybe, you know, maybe just there's a middle school game because they tend to play earlier.
You know, I didn't feel that they'd come. That's what you're saying.
Yeah, exactly, yes.
Yeah, I forgot why we had to come. Oh, I know what it was. This year, the October sixth day was the one that they originally had scheduled for the early release day when they did the, what they had done before, the Open House conference night or day. And night, so I think they just stuck with that schedule for this year. But it doesn't need to be on that date for the future. So I'll mention that to Sarah.
Yeah, maybe just to have a conversation with.
Italian Association.
Yeah, with the athletics to just say geez, our sixth away day, that's going to be pretty impactful for them.
That they don't get back in time.
Because they don't get back in time, especially with bus delays.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Hopefully they won't.
They don't have the schedules done before they vote on the town. You can do a free vote, a free vote. Because you can have a placeholder, you know, say it's the sixth, knowing that you're going to have to come back to them for another vote once the athletics, the competition schedules come out. That's an evening event too, so you can do that with other background. Yeah. I mean, you could just take a free vote on it. So you can like, I used to have placeholder.
No, that's a good point. Let's try to correct that.
Right, I know. It's a reminder again.
Do it on a Friday because they have less, I don't know what the schedule is.
There's still games.
There's games Friday.
Carol, I have a couple of questions on the grants. So you pointed out those numbers here are missing a couple zeros in the other districts. Is that a function of the number of students in our district or is it a function of affluence? What is it that determines how much we get for these grants?
Yeah, it depends. There's a formula that's used by the state federal government. Part of this economic disadvantage students in the district, so it goes off of that primarily. And actually, the type of four grant feeds off of the type of one grant as well. It's for a different purpose, but those are just the numbers that are used.
So is the expectation of the government that, is the expectation that in a less economically disadvantaged district that we will have additional funding available to pay for it locally for these things? Not that the things are needed, right?
I think it's sort of the opposite way. I think it's more that they give more funding to greater needs. Like it's kind of switching things to that. I don't think they do that just expecting districts to give more money. We can afford to, but you really want to do what those communities, what they truly funding.
One of the items on here are the type of four grant, what is this, the communications survey tool? Can you speak to what that is?
Yeah, that's what we used to be serving on, right now. The one that we brought in superintendent's advisory council because the one that we were using had so many, was clunky and had so many glitches. We were finding complaints from parents. Everybody actually was trying to get approval for them and felt that this was able to be a little bit cleaner. But we are finding and we also have capability through power school, which is an option.
So I know that particular item because I'm interested in seeing us put in place a more robust school climate type of survey on an annual basis. We move lower and I'm thinking that probably going to cost more than what we're using now. But I understand because there are a number of providers out there that conduct these school climate surveys in public school districts and provide that information up to us from teachers, staff, parents as to what they're feeding these up for district people who are on it right now. I think that's probably from my standpoint, been one of the most difficult things in the whole of the school committee is not having that kind of three sixty feedback from parents and teachers as to what's happening district-wide. And so I think as we move forward, finding funding and a tool that's a little more robust and also I don't need to make up our own questions, but there are people who have created questions that they know to be scientific and tested and we can tell we do year to year almost.
And that's what we did for the parent equity survey last year when we used panorama questions. And that was what the superintendent's advisory council worked on when they sent that survey out. But we did the off scene and we did want to run a SUI survey on that this year. And actually, Jeff and I were just talking about that this morning, about getting together again and putting that survey together for students who are being drawn up where you want those to be.
I'd like to see you do that too. That teacher's your feedback can be as well as the same.
Do you have a question? I'm just going to make a note. I don't know if people knew this. I didn't know this until my daughter took the class. But when you take that class for Clinton Savings Bank, you become a certified teller. So she can work at bank.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. And I mean, just think what the financial, they don't understand how to write checks or anything like that. Maybe they won't ever have to, who knows? But they learn so many valuable real life skills during that class.
We had a student at Tohonto, I walked into the branch in Waspleson. And I looked at her and you have to see somebody you know, but they're not in the same place. And this Pleasant is complaining, I said, you're in Tohonto still? And he said, yeah, I am, you know. He was doing his internship and he was working part-time getting paid there. And Amanda was telling me that evening about Open House, that he went on to college and he would work at the bank, at the bank part-time while he's going to college. So it's a four G C student. But what did you have to talk to the student?
And they make it clear, like Cheryl Hazel, who is the branch manager of the one in Boylston, said, we want to hire the students. We want them working for us.
Absolutely.
Especially in the summer when everybody wants to on vacation.
What grade is the class?
High school, right?
High school. Anyone nine to twelve?
Maybe old age group. Yeah. Make sure you have any rate of.
Probably have to be like sixteen to, right? There's probably eighty on it.
Oh, yeah, to work.
Yeah. If we're working, you have like a branch.
Any other questions? Thank you, Karen. We already did the Tohonto little school, a director of finance, Miss Kiskie.
So I will start with the budget timeline.
Yep.
So the timeline has been reviewed at our budgets of committee meetings, twice actually. So I'll briefly go over the timeline. Currently, our administrators and principals are working on their preliminary budgets. Any above-level service request is going to be reviewed by administration and then it will be reviewed by the subcommittee on October twentieth. Hopefully, we'll have it ready by then. The budget request will continue to be reviewed internally with administration and the entire budget will then be reviewed by the subcommittee on December eighth and presented to the school committee on December thirteenth. In January, with a date that is yet to be determined, the budgets will be presented to the respective towns of Florida Selectmen and Finance Committees. Updates to the budget will continue up until the public hearing on February twenty-eighth. And the final step will be a vote at the town meetings for a date that is yet to be determined. Most likely, it will be in May. I kind of went with the same timeline that you guys have always used to keep it familiar. Then you will find the up-to-date budget report for fiscal year twenty-three. Again, I kept the format the same as my predecessor since you're familiar with it. Would be the best way to start off here. So the first page shows the year-to-date budget for the entire district. So you have district-wide and then it goes down for each school. So you have Berlin Memorial, Boylston Elementary, and Tohonto. The second page, I added a brief description of each of the categories so you know what is included in each. And as you can see at the beginning of the school year, we have a lot of budget transfers that take place. Personnel, miscellaneous expenses, and grants are all encumbered. So there's a lot of funds that are transferred and moved around to make everything work. But the budget isn't, the adjusted budget is the same that you approved. There still are a lot of expenses that aren't encumbered. Some of them are, you know, we've worked through them through the year. Some common ones are special education expenses that are hard to always encumber, utilities, maintenance, and operations. So just, I just want everyone to keep in mind when you look at the budget balance that that isn't an accurate reflection of where we're going to be at the end of the year because there's a lot of expenses that will be placed throughout the year. And that's what I have.
So at that point, Nancy, if you, if I'm trying to understand where we are and how we're trending towards the bottom line budget, do you want to look at it to say, okay, we're looking good?
So if you look at the district line?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing that's over budget. We're in line. Right now, we are currently in line with.
All of that. Okay. So right across the administration would say the 1.048 original budget. You've got transfers, adjusted budget, because these transfers, transactions that have occurred plus the incumbents, which is with the sixty-nine thousand of the yen.
Yeah.
But there's expenses that are going to hit that sixty-nine thousand if we go through the year. The budget balance there is sixty-nine.
Yep. So each, I would, to accurately look at that, I'd have to dig into it. It's harder for me at this point in time because I didn't create the budget. So, you know, I have to go back and really dig into it and look at it. Most of, you know, normally I probably don't have it in the top of my head, but this is going to take me a little bit to catch up. So just looking at this, I think that there was probably a lot of movement with principal movement, me coming in. So that, I believe that's a savings, but I think that's one of the things that I want to get back to. And like in another example, as you can see, like with instructional support, I did a budget transfer of almost a hundred and twelve thousand. So.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah. A lot of that was movement within the grants because we added some paraprofessionals into the two forty grant. And we were able to have savings throughout the budget because of that.
So do you have any comment on some of the savings we realized because of some senior teachers leaving and being replaced by the younger staff who will be lower on the salary ladder? Is that part of that too? Do we see that reflected in there?
Yeah. That goes under, that's under the instructional support.
So that's a part of that too?
Do you ever want to, a deeper dive or this presented a different way, just let me know? Because I mean, I have it broken out a lot of different ways. I have it broken out just by salaries. So you can kind of see where everything.
For a deeper dive, Mrs. Grub, Mrs. Grub would be better to provide for me.
I love spreadsheets.
Gee, she don't like that.
I love spreadsheets. So my question is, if we're under budget by 1.6 million at year-end, which is what I'm gathering from this, right? There's going to be 1.6, maybe?
No. So not everything's encumbered. Utilities aren't encumbered. There could be, you know, special education's always an unknown.
Gotcha.
Not everything is encumbered in budget. So that's what I'm trying to say, that 1.6.
There could be a saving. I get it. You're not, it looks like we're in a good position right now.
You're in a good position.
Yep. So if there's extra money left over, let's say like, I don't know, let's say like April rolls around and we're like, oh yeah, we've got like this extra $500,000, $400,000. Can we like just take that money to do a project?
You can't take the money down.
I don't want to take it. Let's say we want to put air conditioning in at V E S. We do that? Four hundred thousand, didn't Jeff get it? You don't think that we'll have that?
I don't think we're going to have that amount of money.
The balance is hopefully fifteen thousand, twenty thousand. We spend almost right there depending. That's when we have, that's when we have something at the end. Past five years, I know it's a nice thing to think about, but.
Well, I'm just looking at the spreadsheet. So I'd love to see what the other encumbrances are. I guess, yeah.
Please, maybe it would help you if I gave you a list of what's not encumbered and then you see why I'm not, you're not going to have 1.6.
I'm going to be like, oh wait, this is all spent.
Right.
So this paint a picture of like.
Just after speaking with the special ed director today, there's so many things that are like, could be. I mean, special ed is a really unknown area.
Right.
Pop up and a lot of things that.
Yeah, well.
Are good to see that.
And the reason a lot of times that we're in good shape is like at the end of the year, we do have stuff. We prepay a lot of things, like we'll prepay tuition and things too. That helps us. Otherwise, we have to pay almost during the year, which we almost could not do. We'd be digging into school choice all the time or we just wouldn't be able to find something. When we have savings, we prepay things that are allowable to prepay.
So if there is savings, you prepay?
That's typically what we do.
And the thing I'm thinking is, as someone who had to defend our budget to two different towns, I had calls from different people, income and selection. I think if we had an extra five hundred thousand, it would not, we would not fare well since we might fall for that kind of money anyway.
Oh, right, exactly.
So we pay for things that we would have had to pay for anyway, you know, like I said, tuitions. So we can prepay when we do because we'd have to do it anyway. It'd have to come from the top. So the largest, to have $500,000 over and then, oh, you know, we're going to put air conditioning in, put seven in the go.
Right.
None. It's not a thought, it's a thing to say, okay, well, you did this so you could pay for something.
Yeah, it would be like we took this money.
I think they would want us to pay for next year's budget. You know what I mean?
Right. I get it. So it doesn't sound like we're going to have that much left over anyway.
Well, we'll see, but usually it's, it's usually not.
Yeah. That's why I kind of was thinking about leaving that balance column off because it's kind of just stupid. It's not an accurate reflection of where we're going to be.
I have the same here. I know what you're saying. Ask me too much.
And that's what I'm like, I should have taken out.
I would just have the math.
Thank you, Nancy. We can, as in the conference, something we can put on there to get it back.
Yeah, like if you have a detailed spreadsheet, I'm.
Oh, there's so much detail behind this. You'll love it.
Yeah, I mean, like, I have to look at it, but yeah.
Yeah. And you like, like I have like all the payroll and things spreadsheet and if you look at it, you'll see that where it lands and.
Yeah. No, I get it. I get it.
Yeah. Like when I started, I will say with the prepaes, like, there were, I think, two odd districts prepaid and I want to say transportation. And that was a huge help in starting off this year with making everything balanced. Like that makes a very big difference to be able to do that.
To do the prepay.
That's huge. Yeah, absolutely.
So then when the school committee approves the budget at the nineteen-one number, how much responsibility does the administration have to do these transfers as you've done to a few years? That is.
So the.
We can transfer within a fine card.
Yeah. All of these are transferred within my cards.
Other than that, we have to come to.
Not that we want like, you know, we're.
Right, yeah. So I normally always brought budget transfers on a quarterly basis for a pool.
Do you have anything else?
I have one more. So the last item is the deposit for the OPEP trust. So requesting approval for a deposit into the OPEP trust for fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. This is the amount that was approved by the school committee in the fiscal year twenty-three budget. And it accounts for funds from Berlin Memorial, Boylston Elementary, and Tohonto.
Do you have any questions?
We were all in the.
Yeah, I know. It's like a dress of easy grass.
It's okay. I think you guys appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So Ms. Fitzpatrick and Mr. Mara have been there. So we'll move down to the school committee's chair of support. And mine's more just a communication really. I did reach out to Lindsay Caffernan, who is the chair of the Shrewsbury School Committee. And I did it because Adam had actually found a document for their superintendent's evaluation. And it was really streamlined. It looked a lot easier. And it was really streamlined, it looked a lot easier. So I reached out to her and asked her if we could have a chat, you know, she could, or if she could just explain to me how, you know, how they do this. And she said, let's have a call, we're on the call for probably a half an hour. She was so great to work with. And she gave me a lot of information that I will pass along to the superintendent evaluation that group that I think is very helpful. And one of some of the things we need to look at too are how the superintendent does the report too. They use a different structure, so it might be easier using the different structure. So those are things that that committee can talk about. Another thing that we were able to talk about, it just happened to, she happened to ring up that day, was, you know, Boylston is not part of the aspect collaborative for Ellen is. And, you know, there's a lot of upset parents and I don't think they necessarily understand that it wasn't our decision, it was Asav's decision. And in Shrewsbury, the parents were very upset because she said they had about 100 kids that wanted to go. So she said, with that many kids, you know, it's worth our looking into how we can join the collaborative, how much it would cost, what we would have to do, if it's even a possibility. So Shrewsbury is investigating that right now. And I did ask her if she could keep me in the loop. I said, I'm going to have to remember to reach out to me, I'll reach out to you every now and then just to check in, to see how it's going. So we're lucky to have a district so close. She thought that in the end it may be quite expensive and that the town, you know, ultimately it would be the town's decision to move forward with it. But she was doing the legwork for it, which is pretty, it's nice to have someone so close by that can be a resource.
At some point, you say this, on the government, at one point you need another vocational high school in this area to be able to cover the demand that seems to be there. Or versus offerings will turn around?
And you agree that the internships, we've started the idea of having, you know, parents come in and they do the fairing.
Well, we had talked about this in an after school improvement plan. And so this goes back to the question that you asked, how do we separate ourselves from other schools? Why are we losing kids? And I think it was the first school committee, I believe, that asked me that question. You know, this is one of the things we want to do, to try to figure this out. How do we, you know, why do we lose kids and why, you know, how do we keep them? And so, you know, the reality is, you know, we'll lose kids to the math and science academy, lose kids to St. John, lose kids to the vocational school. So when all that's said and done, it leaves us to compete with the other academic schools. And we're small, so we don't, we don't necessarily, we're not able to often sometimes follow the academic program when they offer. So when we talked about the 5D improvement, there's now a 3D improvement. And Cal's did a great job with Sally and Cara. And the guidance department getting us underway is to introduce the internship and shadowing program. Almost like if you think about in terms of like a Northeastern University where they have, like you can go out and work, so you get some work experience. So we started it last year, they, we're going to offer like career pianos, I think you call them, for sophomores. And then I think they included the juniors, but also in the junior year, offering shadowing experiences where juniors can go out into the community. We have a lot of bio tech, we have a lot of universities, hospitals. Kids can do shadowing experience. And then in the senior year, they have an internship related to that. So that'd be something that there's a lot, most schools don't, most academic schools don't have that. So that's in, that is in there. And one of the things that we had in the budget last year, which we found it was, we had someone to work at a database. So even though we didn't have the program on, we thought we needed the database. So she spent the majority of her time, just, we had an old database from the central math stem pipeline. But, you know, so she worked off that, but also did a lot of call to call. Spent a whole year, we had just, just building up the database. So now when we restructured, we restructured the guidance department. It's a lot of, one of those, one of those faculty members to now oversee that program. So I know Cal, you do a lot of work with them, is anything you want to add on this? So I know the program's governed in the 3D district improvement plan.
Well, last year we had the panel discussions and we got that up and running. So this year you would expect to see the panel discussions upcoming and also some shadowing opportunities as well. So we've already met with Carolyn Roden, she's handling that, she's college and career readiness and she's handling the internship program. She'll be setting that up soon. She's working on that and we will plan in March to get those up and running. So you have to get them up and running to that.
And again, the pandemic, you know, this was all, this would have been, we had this scheduled to actually be up and running. But it's still there, we did take the time to build those databases. So we do have contacts that they can use.
And we do want to know the internship programs as a course as well. So students would have some background and education around how to conduct themselves in a public setting, you know, what is that set? To have them, they're going to be in the workforce and that area. So, yeah, so she's worked, I was working on that.
Do you need more parents? Do you need to go to call up to parents at all to say, would you be interested? Do you have, you know, a career that you'd be willing to have a child, you know, student shadow?
We will absolutely be doing that.
And then the other thing is, it's like, you know, we've talked about this, she has only had one. The restructuring, that's what a program. So that not only gives us more opportunities for those students, but it gives us more opportunities for just expansion of after school programs. So those are the little things that other schools, because they're big, they, they don't, it's not that they don't offer, but they're, but they're big schools, so they don't have, it gets cumbersome. We're small enough, so we can offer those after school activities, homework periods, you know, music classes, art, all of those kind of things. So those are the little things, because basically we're an academic school and so is everybody else. So we're competing with people who have, they have a kid, they have enormous budgets and they have a lot of resources. So you have to think, how are we going to, but we're small, we can be flexible and nimble, so we get to take advantage of that. And so all these things like the internship shadow and the after school periods, putting in late buses, and I think, you know, Cal, we talked about adding another one. So I mean, that's something you're going to have to work on, but.
Yeah, I don't think it's a leaving because they're not challenged.
No, that's not true, there probably is some other, but I can't tell you how many, how many calls I took from parents, especially when I first got here. At the high school at least, so you're thinking of the other, right? You're thinking of like in middle school.
No, I'm specifically thinking of the eighth and nine year old.
Well, I mean, again, I took a lot of calls from parents who wanted more of this academic one. It's one of that sixth period appeared in the first place is to try to expand program. That's not the way to do it, you have to do it a very structured way. So, so that you don't miss, you know, you expand program at the expense of management and operations of the school. So we've talked about that. So there's some, there's some other bases too, but part of it is the operations, the management. Part of it's that too.
Who made you?
Yes, yes.
So it's on a different topic. I know I saw you send a deal out to the MASC this, asking for information on how other school committees and districts share meeting materials. And people have questioned us on that. And I think they're right, you know, we need to be able to provide transparent access to the materials that are related to the meeting we're having so that people can inform them what they all, if they're asking a meeting. Can you share, Laurie, what you heard back from other districts and chairs as to how they, just generally speaking, how they have proceeded to make sure this information is publicly available?
Yes, I can. I know several of them use, one, one district takes. They take, they basically have a full PDF. It starts, the first page is the agenda and then all underneath it are linked, or not linked, because it's a big PDF form, of every item that's going to be discussed when they are, when they're in their meetings. I did ask them and curiously enough, they give their, they release theirs the next day. It's just always been the next day. And that was something that was interesting as well, was trying to figure out when you release it, when legally can you release it? Let me see, just trying to find, there was, there was a, there were several different kinds of methods that they used, they used programs. Let's see, there was a woman from Trident Regional, the chair. She wrote in and said that the, you know, they, they use Board Docs, which is a program. And any document can be prepared in advance, exceptions are few and posted with the agenda at the time of posting. So they, once they post their agenda, all of their documents get posted too. So there's a few different things that they did. Adam, did you say you use something?
I use something called Word, which my clients that have boards, probably some of them have Board Docs.
Yeah.
Type of product. But I, I think from my perspective, a year into this now, I think we need to do a better job of getting meeting materials available, not only to work with us, we want to be advanced. I mean, I think 72 hours is what I would expect to be able to have everything in hand for upcoming meetings. So I want to ask us to try to be better at that and get these things in there. And if, if we can't get information in there in time, we can push the edit to the next meeting. But speaking personally, there's several items for this meeting that you can drive to a table. And that's difficult to catch up on and be informed about.
I know Mohawk Trail, I just shared this last one, they post their packet on the Friday prior to their Tuesday meeting. So you can look at it, you know, over the weekend, digest it, which is great for school committee members, but it's also great for the public in case there's something that they want to say. They don't have to, you know, kind of generate it on the fly. So we have lots of different options. There's another one I still have to check out as well. But we did discuss it in our policy meeting. A little bit, and I don't know if that would be something policy would continue to deal with? Or would we set it to student?
I think it belongs to policies.
Yeah, I think it's a lot of policy. So we did have a discussion about it.
Well, our next meeting isn't until November 15th. We've got some time here to.
Yes.
Get that figured out, if anything goes into that. I'd love to see us have this information, a little bit of all of this, 72 hours, look at mine. Recommendation, yes.
Yeah, it's hard. I had to work, I worked today, so, and I'm sure.
October 15th.
It's extension season, October 15th. So, yeah, it's just hard. I, you know, there was some stuff in there, but the stuff that was not, you know, you don't have the chance to look at it and then meaning becomes less productive, so.
Well, I find as the week begins, the time disappears.
Oh, yeah.
Like at the end of the week.
Yeah, so, yeah, 72 hours, I think it's good. And if we can get it to the public too, right? So the public can look at it and decide if they want to come and sit and listen. Or, you know, if a topic's being discussed and the material being discussed, it's something they're not interested in, they don't, you know.
Well, Adam, today on our school committee Facebook page, he posted.
I saw that, that was great.
Thank you. So great place to go, check it out. Subcommittee updates, budget facilities and safety subcommittee.
Yeah, so we got a meeting last Thursday, I don't know, two hours. Megan, Julie and myself, along with Nancy Carroll and Paul Sitchin for one portion of what we talked about, cell phone service in and around this building and the challenges that that entails. But I think overall, a really effective meeting. We were able to look back at some of the benchmarking we had requested for non-union personnel and understand where we are compared to other districts, specifically principals and paraprofessionals. And had some initial conversation there about how to enhance some of the budgets to make sure we can attract and retain great support staff and principals and all of our buildings. We also looked at the district improvement plan, specifically the personnel section, which was closest to completion, and looked at some of the timing on hiring. In particular, looking at those aides in kindergarten classrooms as well as two teachers at BES that would then get us to three teachers for every grade level at BES. And so the message we sent back to the administration was that move forward, improve these things now and put them in the budget for next year rather than trying to space them out for a two to three year period. I think we all feel that there's a need to make a pretty major investment in our schools this upcoming year to this budget process. And let's put it all on the table before we pull the impact. But I think that was the general consensus, maybe, you know, our general consensus was, let's put all this in there if we go forward. And we also spoke about the facilities assessment we have activated for BES. If you haven't been looking at it, still waiting for some people there. If you know any good facilities assessment contractors, tell them there's a RFP out there. 19th, right, October 19th is the last day. So that's an important thing, I think, for us too, because we know the roof and the impact system in particular, we need some enhancement there, replacement. And the OPEP settlement, which is, you know, approved later on today. We have to understand, you know, what that looks like over the next 10 years and try to make sure we have the right level of savings in that account so that we can cover our retiree healthcare and expenses going forward.
The cell phone, I think that's an important thing. I know parents have been asked, I've had a few parents ask about that. So do you want to give us a?
Yeah, so what Paul shared is that back in 2007, we had a webinar where they talked about potentially locating a tower here on the property. There was some back and forth at that time between two towns and the school district to generate revenue from that. I think the outcome of our conversation was that we need to talk to the town of Boys and First and see if there's an opportunity for them to pursue it. Versus for us, there's some challenges, but if we wanted to put like a repeater device here in this building to improve it, we run into some legal liability issues with that. But I think the first step is for us to talk to the other election officials in Boys about a potential way to improve the lack of cell phone activity. This going around it, which is a safety issue.
I like that you guys are asking to see like all needs on the table because I think sometimes maybe with the budget, like, oh, that's not that bad. Or to know what, for the community, the parents to know what the needs are, I think is really important. But then when, you know, when they have to go and ask for money, they say, oh, well, I get it now. I heard all these things. So I like the transparency and I like that it's early on.
I think also the district improvement plan. And making sure we can get that effectively out to the community so they understand what it is we're trying to do and why, and then it's the most possible as for the decision for the town.
Absolutely, that's great.
Next meeting is October.
All right, student success and technology subcommittee, is that mine, does mine show that?
It is mine.
Does anybody want to speak to it?
On the public, so we have no meetings since our last school committee. But Mr. Totten is working, getting this schedule for us.
Policy and school committee effectiveness, I'm the Illinois president. It was myself, Mr. Totten, Mr. Holmes and Mr. Zangy and the WPAC. What we did is we went over the updates from the MASC policies. They've sent out additional language. And what I've done, and they're going to be first reads for the next time. What I've done is I made a document for three of them, I need to do the rest of them. But you see what the old policy was and then you see in red what they want to add in. And it's just protected classes, it's no major change other than the fact that they want to make sure these classes are protected. So you'll see those in the next meeting. And then we had talked a little bit about goals. And we were going to work, I think it's going to actually write them off for our next one. And then we have that. Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee, that's a different name now, is it?
Yeah, personal.
Yeah.
It's like the contract, so we haven't met because there just hasn't been any.
Yes, and even though I'm not on, I'm not a part of that group, I'm trying to figure out what I can tend to give you guys the information to go through. And I'd be happy to explain the old process if you need me there. I don't have uniforms, we have to kind of figure out how we would do that. Or to even just, you know, send it along with a letter. Because trying to make heads or tails of stuff, it can be really.
You know what we could do, Laurie, maybe you and I could just talk since I'm the chair on that committee.
That'd be great.
Yep, and then I share that to the committee so we can at least kind of, because I know Bob had mentioned maybe kind of to make things a little easier for us.
Yes.
We kind of do pieces of, you know, the evaluation or as much as we can.
Yes.
On a orderly basis. So, yeah, maybe we should try to.
Yeah.
Set something up.
Yep, perfect. I think that's it. New business, could I have a motion to remove the execution of a contract between BB RSD School Committee and Merrick O'Connell Attorneys at Law? The negotiation and preparation of a contract between the BB RSD School Committee and Carol Costello for the position of superintendent of schools beginning July 1st, 2023, in the amount of $235 now.
Okay.
Adam, second?
Second.
Surely, discussion?
I would say that the budget. I would say that the budget subcommittee has looked at, in the process of, on this topic, it looked at several attorneys that were evaluating for the future. And they're going to plan to address the amount of revenue on the 20th and come back with a recommendation to school committee on permanent counsel. Um, but in the meantime, as supporting, doing this for this upcoming, Adam.
Trial. All right. Any other discussion? On favor?
Aye.
And an aye as well? It passes. He motion to hire Merrick O'Connell to do negotiations with VBRSD School Committee and Carol Costello. Um, could I have a motion to approve an OPEB deposit in the amount of $51,737?
So moved.
Sorry. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Motion passes. Nice. There was just a few of you, I can't. Um, could I have a motion to approve the acceptance of grant as presented by Ms. Costello?
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. The motion to approve the acceptance of grants as presented by Ms. Costello passes. Now, items D through G, we have, um, they're all first reads, but for the public, I'll let them know. It's approve the creation of the chess club at Tohonto Regional. Approve the creation of a game group at Tohonto. Approve the creation of an auto club at Tohonto and add an additional stipend to the National Junior Honor Society. And, there's something else. Thank you. So those are all first reads and we will vote on those next time. And at this time, we do not need to enter executive session. So our, our upcoming meeting dates are October 25th as needed, November 15th and December 13th. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'm an aye as well. This concludes our meeting.
Good.